Good?
I'm good.
All right, we will call the order of the June fourteenth meeting of the Los Leves Community-
Recording in progress.
Los Leves Community Services District. Mr. Savage, could we have a roll call?
President Thayer?
Here.
Vice President Palmer? I'm sorry, Vice President Ross, I'm sorry, I was thinking about the fact that Lisa's not here. President Ross, sorry.
Here.
Director Parks?
Here.
Director Kennedy?
Here.
And Director Palmer?
Here.
She is, as noted in the agenda, participating from Wyoming and Kauai.
Okay. And I was reminded that today is June fourteenth Flag Day, so fitting we stand for our Pledge of Ladies. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I will also just make a quick note if I hear it in my voice, I'm dealing with something, so if I have to make a temporary quick exit, Vice President Ross will take over. So we now come to public comments. Members of the public may address the board on any items of interest in subject matter jurisdiction of the board, also items that are not on the agenda today, that is at three minutes. We will start with Mr. Ross.
Hey, this is just kind of sad, to be honest. What I found out from recent public investigation is you folks have failed to do your very simple administrative filings as required by law, right? You were supposed to have filed with the Secretary of State to register five years ago. Nobody did that. Seems like a big failure, right? It seems like somebody should be in trouble over that. I can't imagine how you, it's like, oh, I forgot to go to the DMV for five years. This is not, you know, speaking on high level of confidence. Next, it seems as if you're supposed to put in your income and expense statements on an annual basis to the state comptroller's office. Also, not done. Then on top of that, bylaws. You're supposed to have bylaws, and that'll come up over and over again tonight because people are just doing wacky-dacky, willy-dilly kind of activities, well, probably because you don't have bylaws. And it's weird, it's a state law requiring you to have bylaws, but no one's done it. And I'm trying to be mirthful over it, but it's really sad, it's depressing, you know, like, like, like I can't even imagine how this happened and how people aren't upset, right? If I were a board member and I thought, hey, I'd counted on staff or I'd counted on council to tell me about this, I would be upset. I'm not seeing any of that, I mean, I, I'm not seeing any haste, right? Failed to do something for five years. If I had an employee who did that, I think I would be worked out. So I'm hoping to see some of that from you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Catherine Roar?
Catherine Roar, I am definitely speaking on something not on the agenda because I haven't heard anything about it in a long time. So I'm going to remind everybody that we have a project description. It was adopted by unanimous resolution nineteen oh four by this board. Many of you still here on the board today were part of adopting this resolution whereby you adopted a project description and you said you were going to begin special studies, environmental process, pursuit of grant and loan funding, and initiate the Prop two eighteen assessment process, and all other tasks associated with project development and implementation, all to be consistent with the project description. This item is still in full force and effect, it has never been amended, rescinded, or repealed. I've provided copies of it to you in the past, I can get you copies if you need them now. As a refresher, you were supposed to do four things: develop residential onsite requirements, a local lamp consistent with the county lamp; you were supposed to do financial outreach and assistance to get project development consistent with the project description; you were supposed to design a phase collection and treatment system in and for the downtown core, known as Phase One, that's where the language came from; and you were supposed to do, you were supposed to implement a local groundwater monitoring program. Why? Because you said, you told us, you can't possibly figure out what is needed or whether anything is needed or where the nitrates are coming from if we don't have a groundwater monitoring program. Since you all stopped following your own project description, we've had a lot of trouble and spent a lot of money and a lot of time trying to cover the fact that you're not following this, is my take on it. I can't understand any other reason for the last two years and hundreds of thousands of dollars obtained in grant money and expended on something not remotely consistent with this project description. And I really ask you, please, let's get back to work, let's get this thing done, let's get it funded, let's break ground. Go! Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roar.
Is we got on the list?
Is got.
Board members, at the last meeting, Michelle DeWort noted that the Los Leves Community Services District has failed to provide the formation paperwork for the state comptroller's office, in addition to failing to provide any annual income or expense information to the state. Why has there no mention on tonight's agenda that the district is not in compliance with the state law and must provide formation paperwork to the state and as well as other documents? On Sunday, I informed this board that it has violated the Brown Act by holding the technical and grants committee meetings last month. These meetings are required to be public and must comply with the Brown Act under the board's unanimous resolution eighteen oh four, which requires standing committees to be public and that they comply with the Brown Act. I have asked this board to curate, correct this by reholding the meetings and noticing the meetings to the public. Resolution eighteen oh four, for the public's benefit, requires standing committees to comply with the Brown Act, which means that an agenda must be posted three days in advance, and that the meeting must be open to the public. This resolution makes clear that the so-called ad hoc committee committees that the board has actually created are in fact standing committees. This means that all known committees must be noticed to the public and the public must be allowed to attend these meetings. As a result of my letter regarding the technical committee meetings and the Brown Act violation, I am asking that item seven be removed from the agenda for tonight's meeting and that any payment to MMS, MNS engineering, or any services related to the technical committee's actions not be granted. I'm also recommending that the board cease the practice of using MNS engineering and that the board immediately look for an engineering group that is an expert in alternate wastewater treatment systems moving forward. Paul Roar and Miss, and Catherine Roar have been very eloquent tonight, and I really recommend that you follow their instructions that they have actually provided to you because they are spot-on accurate. And this board is not following the law and it's not following the Brown Act. Finally, I'm requesting that the board hold an emergency meeting regarding the lack of formation paperwork on file with the state comptroller's office. And quite frankly, in my opinion, this is a priority, and this takes priority over everything else that you have on your agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other public comments?
Checking, hold on. No. I'll talk to Mr. President if I may?
Yes, please.
Maybe respond to a couple of the things that came up during the public conference.
Please, Mr. Savage.
Yeah, you know, so, as it relates to the Secretary of State and the state comptroller's office, I first became aware of this last December when I tried to file the, every time there's an election, you have to file a form with the Secretary of State's office. So I've been working diligently through that, I traded emails with them in December, you know, it's a state, so I think Mr. Roar brought up the DMV earlier, it's kind of like when you go to the DMV, right? It takes you a couple seconds at Amazon Online, when you go to the grocery store, it takes hours when you go into the DMV. So filing paperwork with the state, you submit it in December, you hear from them in March, maybe, right? And then you hear from them when you, you send the response to that letter, you hear from them again in May. And so I've been working through this process as opposed to trying to find, you know, who didn't do what, I've just been trying to fix it on behalf of the district. I believe at this time, and I have sent all four of our audits to the state comptroller's office, that we have properly filed with the state comptroller's office and we are registered, to the best of my knowledge, with the Secretary of State. Now, they are state agencies, I checked that in early May with them, let's see, May, June, so if they hold true to their pattern, I might see a letter from them maybe in July, just because that's about how long it takes for them to respond. So, again, I believe everything has been completed. I checked the databases earlier today just to see, they still have databases from April posted, which was after my last go-around with them, so until they update their databases online, we won't see if we're there officially. I don't know that I'll get an email from them or a letter from them saying, you know, thank you, you've done everything you have to, it just doesn't seem to be the way the state operates in these two particular situations. So I will continue checking, but I do believe that, again, to make it really clear, for the state comptroller's office and Secretary of State, the district is covered.
And so maybe Mr. Savage in future board meetings in your GM report, you can update us on that as well.
I'd do so.
Okay, so we'll move on to administrative items, item five, a number of items. Are there any questions from the board on any of the items A, B, or C? Mr. Savage, do we have any requests to speak on item five?
I, I don't know, Mr. Roar, did you put five on there? I didn't, no, okay, I'm not seeing.
Okay. Any questions?
Sorry, Henry may still have her hand up, or has her hand up again? I'm not sure which.
I have my hand up.
Ms. Gop, please.
Again, I would just like to reiterate from my public comments that if any of the invoices for MNS engineering are related to last month's technical committee's meeting, I would ask that they not be paid, as this board is required to rehold both the technical as well as the grant committee meetings from last month, as if they were not noticed to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So...
I'm, did we approve item five?
We have a motion approved, we have a second?
Second.
Second. I believe we have to do a roll call because of Director Palmer's.
Yes.
So, roll call, Mr. Sav- oh.
Is there any way we can prove it, like eliminate MNS until we can really determine whether or not that meeting was broken with technical?
Well, we have a motion and a second to approve it, so, whatever, whatever you hear. Mr. Savage.
Vice President Ross?
Aye.
Director Kennedy?
Aye.
President Thayer?
Aye.
Director Palmer?
Aye.
Director Parks?
Oops.
Carrie's four oh one. Brings us to our business items. Item six, our fiscal year twenty twenty-three, we talked about this at our last meeting, and Mr. Savage, do you want to?
Yes, I do. Just a minute, I'm sorry, need to get to the right files. Okay. Fine, sorry. The document that I'm showing on the screen right now is available on the district's website, and is also, was attached to the packet itself. What I put together this year for your board is kind of a very typical proposed budget document for a small district such as ours, just kind of some introductory pages as far as, you know, what, what's in the budget, what it was based on, that sort of thing. I provided some comparisons between last year's adopted budget and the current proposed budget. As you can see, for instance, in this, in this particular slide, or this particular section from the document, you know, the special tax assessment has gone up a little bit, it goes up by basically CPI each year. Interest income, it doesn't look like there's any because it's such a small number in comparison to the other numbers, but there actually is a very small amount of interest income. And then for the twenty twenty-three adopted budget, we planned on nearly a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of intergovernmental revenue, meaning grant funds, that would come to us at some point during the year. I did not include any funds in the proposed budget this year, as we discussed during the workshop on the budget, because quite simply, there's no guarantee that those are going to come in, and as we saw with the EHS grants, in fact, those funds, all those funds did not come in, and in fact, we will not be able to get them under the originally proposed grant application. So, again, just kind of covering again what we covered last month, but, so there's a brief comparison between the two budgets. If you were to look down further in the document, you can kind of see how that plays out from a, from a revenues perspective here in twenty-two, twenty-three, you can see nearly half, about forty-some odd percent was assumed, forty-six percent was assumed to be grants, fifty-four are special tax assessment. Again, the zero, there is a very, very small part, but it's such a small number, it doesn't show up, interest income. Just to put that into perspective, here's the grant funds down here in this chart. So you can see, you know, this is what we planned for, for the current fiscal year and as of April thirtieth, we had basically budgeted a hundred and sixty-nine eight oh four, and we'd only received thirty thousand of that. So had the board decided to try and spend that money before it was actually received, obviously we'd be in a bit of a problem. So expenses is really where your board has the most flexibility to control expenses. There are a number of items, and I'll, I'll show you this in the spreadsheet in just a minute, but there are a number of items that are not included in the budget, there's these five right here. Your board has clearly expressed interest in trying to do those activities, but recognizes that in order to complete them, we definitely need some grant funds. Also, when we talk about grant funds, for those who are not familiar with the way the grant fund process works, often you have to have a matching amount of funds, so sometimes it's half the amount of the grant, the amount varies depending upon the grant, but let's say, for example, that this additional technical study, the, your board was able to get a full grant for ninety thousand dollars to do that. It wouldn't be very typical that whoever the grantee is that gives you those funds would say, yeah, you have to come up with half the funds, so they would give you, you know, ninety thousand, and you'd have to match that at a ninety thousand kind of a number. So just keep that in mind as we go through some of these other, these other budget items. So, I'm not going to read the entire document, I'm going to switch to this spreadsheet right here in just a minute, so it's a little bit bigger for those in the audience and online. And then, of course, all of this, all of this is predicated on this rough working draft roadmap that your board has been, been talking about for some time. This focuses in, for those who've not seen it before, on the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And again, for those who aren't familiar with it, the district's budget year runs from July one to June thirty, the subsequent year, so that's why you see Q three, Q four of twenty-three, Q one, Q two of twenty-four. These green boxes that you see here, and we'll be talking about them slightly differently later on when we get to some more discussion about what, what to do about grants and other things, but if you were to add those numbers up, you can see here's the, the estimated cost that would hit us in twenty-three, twenty-four. There are some activities, most notably if we stick to the schedule of the environmental review, there's another quarter of work out here, so while the total estimate for environmental study, for example, is a hundred and fifty thousand, only a hundred thousand of it would hit during the proposed FY twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. And then, there are a number of, of steps that are proposed that we've been working through. Here we are tonight, assuming the board approves a preliminary budget, by the end, this time next week, I would publish in a local newspaper, as required by law, a notice of the hearing that we will be having presumably on July twelfth, if that's where your board decides to go, to hold an official budget hearing. You do have to hold a special hearing related to adoption of the annual budget. Shortly thereafter, I would post it on the website. So with that, let me jump to the more detailed spreadsheet. Share that real quick so that you can take a look. See if I can make that a little bigger for people to be able to see it. All right, so, I think that's about as big as I can make it, still have it fit on a, on a screen here. So, I kind of walked through this a few minutes ago, but I'll, I'll hit it, kind of by the numbers here briefly. So here in column B, you can see the B up here, was the twenty-two, twenty-three approved budget, here through April thirtieth are the actuals, and these are the same numbers that we were dealing with at the last meeting, so that's why I left it. So column C was the actuals through four-thirty, and column D here was the proposed budget, and I've adjusted those columns based on commentary from the budget workshop. So here you can see about twenty-five thousand dollars more in revenues based on what we'd actually seen in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Here's that kind of paltry amounts of, of interest income, to calculate that, I averaged the prior three years. So you add those up, and our total revenue in cash comes out to about two-hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. I'll come back to this forty-eight thousand, which is presumably the amount of balance that will come forward from the current fiscal year. So then, kind of scrolling down here, let me, follow this a little more easily. There we go. So then I'll go down to expenditures briefly here, so this first line, twenty-nine hundred dollars is our insurance, SDM RMA, and it's given us a quote, so we're pretty confident that, that is what it will be. Accounting and such, you know, this is the audits that we do, or need to do annually, it's, they have given us a number of quotes right around twenty-five hundred dollars. This latest quote from them for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, I'm sorry, twenty-one, twenty-two budget year was actually a little bit higher than that, so we're going to get a couple of hundred dollars potentially off on that one. Memberships, we do pay a membership to the, to the SDM RMA and Local C SDA, which is the, the organization for local special districts. Professional services is where the biggest expense could be, this really has to do with, and I listed it here as unallocated, so I budgeted for it because we do have to produce a balanced budget. So I set aside indirectly here just under eighty thousand dollars for your board to spend on some of those things that, that we were talking, I was showing you earlier, so, things potentially like a match for a technical study. Or your board could just say, you know what, we want to spend seventy-eight thousand dollars to do some of this technical study. And then matches for these things like the sixty percent design, fifty percent assessment of the hundred K of environmental. And last but not least, kind of off the screen, just a smidge here, fifty thousand dollars for an MHI study. So if your board wanted to, you could spend that when, when you wanted, as long as it's on professional services. Legal fees, this is kind of a straight line of the current year's budget, plus agreed to contract increases. So what I did is I took the number from May, or April, rather, let me be clear about how I did this, divided it by ten, right, because that's ten months, and then I added two more months, right, and added four percent to make it that number. Did the same for contract services. Publications, this is an assumption that we have to publish our budget notice, and I set aside, per board's request, enough funds for what I believe would cover five workshops, meaning fifteen hundred dollars to pay for publications and other printing activities related to holding workshops. That brings the total service supplies to about two-hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. We do set aside a reserve, in this case, I've listed it as forty-five thousand, five-hundred and thirty dollars. So that brings you to what is essentially a balanced budget, because when you look through twenty-two, twenty-three, we should end the year with about forty-eight, forty-nine thousand dollars, which is that number that was at the top. So this reflects a balanced budget based on the input from your board. So that's the walkthrough of the budget. Before I hand the floor back to you, Mr. President, the only thing I would, would remind you is, there's a couple actions related to this particular board item, it's not just yes, that, that budget looks good, I do need specific direction to post in a local newspaper, the hearing notice, so please make sure that's covered, should someone choose to make some sort of a motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Savage. Any quick questions from the board before we go to public comment? Okay, I have Mr. Roar.
I'm Paul Roar. So the issue with this budget, and I wish this had been in a different order, so we dealt with the water board, or the, what is it, the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board, that we dealt with their letter before the budget, but this touches the budget. The budget does not include any sums to do the required testing, well water testing within the district. We've talked about that before, and we've said that reason would demand that you test the water inside the district to see whether or not we indeed have a problem, right? People suppose we have a problem, there was a bad test well in nineteen seventy-three, and I think the Eagles had hits then. So, so this all goes back a long time ago, we have a test well recently up in the northern boundary, which tells us that either cows or the dump make nitrates. But we don't have any test wells from in here, so logic would have told us to do it, and now we have a letter from the Water Control Board saying that you must come up with a testing plan and a schedule to do it. And they say you shall, I think were their words. There was no optionality. I believe their counsel is present, and she might be able to give a, a better understanding of whether or not they can mandate it, right? I have no idea whether they have the authority, but they certainly, in their words at least, are asserting that they have authority to tell you to go and do this, and so you have to do it. So to leave that out of the budget doesn't make any sense. I think you need to go back in, recast your budget priorities to do this thing that, one, you're being mandated to do by a regulatory body, and two, which logic would demand that you do, so you know what the problem is before we spend a hundred million, or fifty million, or whatever you say it's going to be, to try and cure it. So I think you need to go back and look at the budget, I know this will come up again in the letter, but I would not leave out an item that you are mandatorily being required, or at least on appearances, being mandatorily required to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Back to the board, counsel of the board. Why don't I just start from the end and work, starting with Director Parks?
As far as the budget goes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I understand that, you know, with the comment about, you know, Paul, about the well, but I think that you'll see that there's going to be some discussion as far as addressing that going forward and trying to get the funds for it. I mean, my, my personal opinion is, I think the water board, when they were here, basically said it doesn't matter what, what the wells say, this is what we need to do, we need to have a problem, we need to be able to solve the, the separate issues that they stated we had, not based on any fact of contamination, but based on the density in certain areas. So, I mean, I think we should try to get money for the wells, and I think that they have a letter that they've, that has been sent proposing where those wells should be, we just need to try to find funds for those, but in my opinion is, I think the professional services, I mean, in my opinion, those should be looking for finding other solutions to our wastewater problems. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Director Ross?
I'm pretty sure this is covered under the professional and special services category, but we have a matching grant that we're still working on, and I believe the first draft of it was uploaded recently, so that will give us half the money once they accept it, which we expect them to do. But then we have the second half, or a second amount, which I think we're estimating to be about thirty percent of the effort, and so I just wanted to make the comment that we need to make sure we have funds available to finish up the second part of the matching grant. to finish up the second part of the matching grant effort so that we can get the 75K as well as the first 75K.
Director Kennedy?
So I do think the priority is definitely in the professionals, special services, in that we, we still need to just, you know, we need to find a comprehensive solution that show, I know this is coming up on an agenda item, but an alternative solution for solving the wastewater treatment. And I know we're going to have, we have on the agenda about the grant, about committees. And, I mean, the bottom line is, you know, we just need more money before we can, I mean, move into comprehensive, you know, these items. And that's, that's the hardcore fact.
Well, yeah, and I would just echo that and note that even to get a grant, not only do you need the match, depending on what the match formula is, but in many cases, or in my experience, most cases, I think there are some exceptions, you need to fund it upfront, you need to pay for it, and then you get reimbursed. What's even worse than that, so you got to have the money upfront, and that's what we're struggling with right now, getting some of that prior grant, grant funding back. So, you know, while I know we have, you know, this $78,000, you know, in the professional special service that the board decides there's an item of work we want to do, we can do that. But I think we need to be very mindful that we, you know, that we need to get the, have money so that we can, I mean, if you get a grant, we don't even have the match, we can't even do the work. And so. There's not a vote. Oh, yeah, Public Comment?
No, Director Palmer.
Well, Director Palmer, Ross.
So I, I think you, I would essentially echo what Director Parks said. It's not that the monitoring isn't a priority, it's just how do we continue with our limited funds to advance coming up with a solution? And if we can identify those funds, and if there's shifting we need to do into the fiscal year that allows us to move forward with both, then that's, you know, that would be ideal. I thought the district's response letter was productive, and certainly we want to continue to collaborate with the Water Board. And I know we're talking about the budget right now, not the future agenda item, but, you know, I did review the budget, and I think it gives us the, generally where it should be. It gives us latitude as we move forward to move funds around as needed. So those are my comments, and I did have a CHS to review it as part of the finance committee last week.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Palmer. Mr. Savage, could you remind the board, we put two wells in. What was roughly the cost for those two wells?
I'm sorry, I, off the top of my head, I don't, I can, hold on, if you want to give me a minute, I can find it for you.
Well, I want to say on the order of $40,000, $50,000.
Was more, certainly more than that.
$40 each? Well, anyways, that's okay. You know, point being, and we did get a grant support from EHS for those. But again, we had to pay for those, and then, and then, you know, you get reimbursed for it, so. So with that, if there's no other comments from, I'm sorry, Mr. Savage, did you have any closing comments on that?
No, I can dig up the number if you'd like.
That's okay. Point made. If not, then could I have a motion for item six, which would include the posting, setting the date and time?
Okay, I'll attempt to do this one. I'll make a motion to, to, we're not really approving it. We're to, for General Manager to notice for the hearing for the proposed budget and set a date for that special meeting.
Oh.
For the proposed budget.
No, I mean the date you want.
Oh, July 12, July 12, I'm sorry.
Just checking, the council, did we cover that adequately, the motion?
Give direction to General Manager to do publications required here in the government.
Okay.
And set the hearing for July 12.
Yeah. Thank you. Do I have a second? Motion and a second, we need a roll call.
Director Kennedy?
Aye.
Director Parks?
Aye.
Vice President Ross?
Aye.
President Farram?
Aye.
Director Palmer?
Aye.
Item passes five oh. We will move on to item seven, Technical Subcommittee Collection Concepts. Mr. Savage, did you want to kick this off?
Could I have a second?
Yes.
So, Mr. President, I think it might be beneficial in this particular case, given the last couple of weeks, to either move item nine up and talk about it before you have this conversation.
Okay.
Obviously up to your board to do that, but there could be some conversation that comes out of the officer election and the whole discussion about subcommittee committees, if my understanding is how you describe, I'm sorry, discussion you might have.
I think that's fair enough, but Ms. Trindles, is that open, we can just do that?
As far as there's no opposition from the board, we can consent.
Okay, then we will go ahead and jump forward then to item nine. And board will review prior actions regarding election of officers or subcommittees. Good, good point, Mrs. Savage.
Yeah, so, let me, yeah, sorry. So let me bring up, as part of the packet, while I included all the minutes related to various meetings that I was able to find, and there was an addendum posted on Monday because a couple members of the public as well as your board pointed out that I missed, in my non-exhaustive search, missed a couple of dates. So I adjusted those and corrected what is in the addendum to the board, and that's what I'm showing you now. So throughout the district's history, there have been a number of actions taken related to elections, subcommittee appointments, and other just general activities. So what I tried to do with this letter was to provide a history of what things took place when, to the best of my ability, and what you see in front of you is just that. So way back at the formation of the district in May of 2018, you elected three officers, President Farram, Vice President Palmer, and Secretary Kennedy. And you made appointments to a standing committee, the Finance Committee of Directors Kennedy and Army. Moving forward, later in that year, you passed Resolution 1804, which was basically your policy on committees, a policy as attached to the agenda. The next month, you made appointments to an ad hoc technical committee, which consists of Directors O'Neil and Army. Almost a year later, you made new appointments to the Finance Committee, Directors Kennedy and Palmer. Then moving into 2020, you had elections of President Palmer and Vice President Farram. You made no changes to the Finance Committee, it was still Kennedy and Palmer, and you made appointments to O'Neil and Army as the ad hoc technical committee. 2021, you can see you confirmed basically Palmer and Vice President Farram. More kind of appointments to committees, Finance Committee was Farram and Palmer. Ad hoc committees were Technical Committee, O'Neil and Army, Project Management, which was a new one, Palmer and Ross. And I will note that that is about the time that then Director Kennedy had left the ward. So that's why I believe there's no real record that I could find as to why no new secretary was appointed instead. I just kind of handed off to your interim General Manager to be the running secretary for the district. May of 2022, election of President Farram and Vice President Ross. Part of that meeting was noted that elections for those two offices are two years. Earlier this year, you made appointments to the Finance Committee, Directors Kennedy and Palmer, and ad hoc technical committee Farram, Ross, Project Management, Palmer, Ross, and Grants, Kennedy, Parks. So a lot of this came about because, at least initially when I wrote this letter, there was a lot of questions about who was on committees, what committees, how are they formed, that sort of thing. And so when I wrote this, which is before quite a bit of the more recent discussion, I was recommending at the time, and I would still recommend it, you know, you do by resolution, set a date in a meeting, basically, for when you will elect your officers, right? So whether it's president, vice president, president, vice president, secretary, whatever your board wants to do, that you pick a time that's tied to something. And I know that certainly counties tend to tie that particular action to after a new board has been seated following a general election. So for instance, elections last November, this January, which like your board did in February, that would be their time to say, okay, we're going to reshuffle the board. The beauty of that, in my opinion, is it does allow people who are newly elected to vote on who president, vice president, or other officers are, but they also have a chance to be one of those officers, right? Whereas if you do it later in the year, you don't have quite that chance. The other option I suggest would be to tie it to when you adopt your budget. Again, tying it to something big is more easily remembered than, there was a discussion in a meeting a couple of years back where you said, oh, we'll do it every April. There was no resolution tied to it, so it was just kind of in the minutes. And you had to search to find it, and people did, but, you know, it just was kind of there. So you were really relying on some sort of annual calendar, which I've been keeping. And interestingly enough, I'd never found that one previously, say, oh, that was in your board's annual calendar. So I would recommend that you consider cleaning some of that up and doing by resolution. I'd be happy to put together some resolution that would go with whatever date your board decided. If you decide to stick with April, which is what your board previously voted on, if you still do that by resolution, I'll just tell you that, you know, short of the General Manager as part of this annual calendar remembering it, it won't be tied to anything, so a little harder to remember in the collective memory of those of us here. So that, I think, is probably at least one of the actions your board could take. I think the other questions that have come up through public comment and that you'll be hearing about are things like, you know, whether or not your ad hoc committees are ad hoc or standing, how do you want to deal with those? Resolution 1804 that said you would be transparent with meetings, ad hoc versus standing. I'm sure counsel can help weigh in on the differentiation between the two. But I suspect your board will talk to me about that. Ultimately, since one of the others wants to talk about discussion that was held in technical committee, then it's my suggestion to move this forward.
Mr. Trindl, did you have anything that you could add about standing versus ad hoc?
Yes, the Brown Act is unfortunately not as clear as it could be. And it definitely does make a distinction between a standing committee, which it considers to be a Brown Act body, and an ad hoc committee, which is generally a temporary committee of limited duration that has a relatively narrow scope. And though ad hoc committees, committees comprised solely of members of the legislative body, do not have to be Brown Act bodies, so you don't have to do the agenda and the notice. But the how long, how narrow, those types of questions are really kind of amorphous. The Brown Act does not say how long or how narrow or answer some of those types of questions. So we use general rules of thumb of approximately six months. That's what the 1804 reflects, is that generally speaking, they're of about a six-month duration. To make clear, that's not a legal requirement, that's just a rule of thumb that Public Agency Council up and down the state uses a rule of thumb, that's what it is, is what it is. If you're going to be longer than that, then a best practice is to reconstitute it, change the membership if necessary, update what its scope is going to be. And one of the ways you do that is by motion, resolution, or it's those are the ways the board's act. So setting a resolution that puts all of that in writing certainly is a best practice and provides the type of transparency that 1804 embodies.
Thank you, Farram. So if we were to come back with a resolution as what you mentioned and Mr. Savage said, we could do that in July next month, and we would do that biannually then. And then if we, if the board's in support of what Mr. Savage is suggesting, which is the annual appointment of officers, as you mentioned, the board supervisors, that we've historically done it every two years, but every year is another way to do it, it's fine, we could start that in January. And with a resolution in July to do both of those, would that be achievable? Do you understand the question?
If you're saying can we write a resolution by then, yes. Absolutely.
Yeah, so I guess just going to sum that up, if we were to come back in July with a resolution that we would reappoint however it's constituted, the ad hoc committees, which is mid-year. And then would be the same resolution, would then elect the officers at the beginning of the year in January?
I would do two.
You would do two?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One has to do with board officers, the other one has to do with subject management.
Any questions from the board before we go to public comment? Okay, we're on item nine.
Are we going to be able, we'll be able to speak to it after public comment, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Director Palmer, did you want to wait, or did you want to say something now?
I'll wait to your public comment, thanks.
So I have Ms. Rohr for item nine.
Yeah, Catherine Rohr. So just to be clear, as an initial matter, this idea that you've appointed officers every two years is just not true. It's not supported by anything in the record. Three out of the four times this board has elected new officers, it's been annually, each year in April or May. It's in the record, you have it. What we have is no bylaws, so we don't have rules, which is why we really do need bylaws, that's why they require them. And then what we have is, as Mr. Savage said, this is just in the minutes. We have just in the minutes a note from May 2022 that Lisa Palmer noted that this election would be for a two-year term, and then she nominated President Farram, and he in turn nominated Vice President Ross. So that's the only precedent, and that's a word with big air quotes around it, we have for a two-year term. So the notion that that's the practice by this body is simply not credible. About your technical committee, when it was created in, no, 2018, so it's been around for five years, almost five years now, it was created as an ad hoc to review technical reports and assist with further development of the draft work plan, consider options, take recommendations. There are select two board members, consider limiting duration under this authorization to three months, which is pretty close to consistent with what counsel said, with his six-month recommendation. But then that didn't happen. For 2018, 2019, 2020, Directors O'Neil and Army were the technical committee. It was never disbanded, amended, reformed, reconstituted, the mission was never changed. Now we have a standing committee. At least at that point, you put in your minutes when the technical committee was going to meet and what it had about. Then we abandoned that. And now we have, let's see, again, never disbanding it, never changing its mission. Then we get Farram and Ross are our technical committee, and they have remained, and that has been unchanged. And so not only do you have a standing committee, which means you're subject to the Brown Act, and it needs to have agendas and notice and public availability, but additionally, you did adopt a resolution in which you said, all your committee meetings, be they ad hoc or standing or anything else, you're going to make them public meetings. You decided that, you bound yourself in Resolution 1804 to do that. So once again, are you going to do what you said or not? Let's get back on track, let's renotice this technical meeting that was absolutely, I expressly asked to be provided information about when and where it would meet, and I was not told. So let's get back on track and do what we're supposed to do.
Thank you. Mr. Savage, any other public comment?
I'm ready, Doc.
This is God.
Good evening, board members. I'd like to reiterate exactly what Ms. Rohr stated, which is we need to make sure that all of our committees, which are standing committees and no longer ad hoc committees, that they are noticed to the public, and the public has a chance to actually participate in them. I find that, you know, what happened in May... I find that, you know, what happened in May, just unbelievable. Ms. Rohr very specifically wanted to attend the technical meeting, and she was completely shut out of that meeting by Mr. Savage. And the board really needs to take that into consideration. You decided in two thousand and eighteen that you were going to make these meetings accessible to the public, and you are not doing that. And you really need to get back on track and make sure that they are accessible to the public, period. Finally, Ms. Rohr makes an excellent point regarding the bylaws. You are required to have bylaws, and I don't see that anywhere on the agenda, even though it had been noticed to Mr. Savage prior to this meeting. So, you need to ensure that by next meeting, we have bylaws to review and approve for the July meeting. Finally, you know, I think you really need to take this as a wake-up call. The public wants to know what's going on with this board, and it is not transparent at all, and you are losing credibility with the public. So, you need to get back on track and make sure that everything that you are doing, every single action that you are taking, is known by the public. Because right now, it just seems that there's a lot of things that are going on behind the scenes that the public doesn't know about, and the public, right now, I don't believe, agrees with what's going on with Los Angeles Community Service District. And you better be aware that that is going to reflect on the vote that you are going to try to hold for the two eighteen vote. You're going to lose the public's confidence, and you're going to lose that vote if you keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gough. Any other public comments online?
Not that I'm saying.
Okay. Okay, we'll come back then for deliberation, discussion. I think let Director Palmer start off.
Thank you. So, while I'm frustrated with some of this, you know, what I look at as, it's not administrative rigor, but I do look to our professional staff to keep us on track. And if, whatever the mechanism is, we need to have to tighten that up, I would appreciate if it's the bylaws, if it's an annual calendar, whatever we need to do to make sure as, you know, if there's a resolution that whoever's on this board either needs to be reminded, or if you're a new board member, to understand what we are, you know, what we voted to hold ourselves to in terms of transparency. I'm struck by, you know, we're board members who, because of the size of our district, are also functioning in a bit of a staff capacity. We're doing work, and that is causing, while the intent is good, it's causing, I think understandably, some public trust and transparency issues. So, I would be in favor of, the other thing I would say is, I know when the ad hocks were originally begun, you know, I think there wasn't expected that there would be a term to the technical committee, there would be a term to the project management committee, and while they may have been meeting episodically, the duration has turned them into standing committees. So, I would be in favor of, you know, making all of our committees regular committees that get noticed and have a regular meeting date. If we don't need them, we can cancel them. But I think that will give the public the comfort and transparency they need. Frankly, some of it for myself, too. You know, I know the technical committee is working, and I appreciate the work that's going into that, but I've asked several times, like, I want to see the work, like, show me, show me the backup work that's going into the conclusions that are drawn. So, I want to focus on how we resolve it and move forward so that we continue to move the work of the district forward, and we can focus on the solution rather than the procedural and administrative side of this. So, I would look to both our counsel and our GM for recommendations on how to tidy this up and get us moving forward, and if that means bylaws in July or any other actions in July that address this, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
And then go down to Director Parks.
Yeah, I guess some comments on this, there's, yes, I mean, I guess, what are our bylaws? Have there been bylaws adopted ever? And if not, maybe we should, if that's causing this kind of confusion amongst the public, we should. And then, yeah, is, which committees are standing, which are ad hoc at this point? I guess some determination needs to be done on, I mean, I don't care, I mean, if maybe I'm on the grants committee, I don't care, if there's a bit of public notice, it's wonderful. I mean, more public participation, the better. As far as I'm concerned, it's sort of, I'm not opposed to posting every meeting as required as a standing committee. We don't need to escape anything as an ad hoc committee, so it may make the meetings more exciting.
Russ?
So, maybe it's okay if I give an answer, so do we have any bylaws at this time?
No, it's a short answer. The longer answer is, if I could leave the counsel here, the bylaws says you have to have one or the other bylaws, one way to do it, and the other is the way your board has chosen to go. So, you could have bylaws, or you could have, what's the technical term, sorry?
This is government code sixty-one zero forty-five. Contrary to the assertions of folks here tonight, bylaws are not required. They're one of the two options. Board of directors shall adopt rules or bylaws for its proceedings. So, the board has been operating via policy practices since May of two thousand and eighteen, but if the request is to have that piled and formulated into bylaws, certainly the board can direct us to do that. Happy to do so.
Very good. Okay, as far as moving forward, just to make sure I understand what we're proposing, so we're saying we're going to do annual elections and appointments, is that true?
Well, I think that was one recommendation that Mr. Savage put on the table.
So, we haven't decided?
Well, I mean, it's the board's, it's the board's, that's what we're going to decide.
Since we only have elections every two years, so this is coming January, there's not going to be any change per se in who's on the board, but we can still shuffle people around, I suppose. And then we're saying January is the right month to do it, maybe, or we're not decided?
Well, I think from Mr. Savage and my experience at county government, and I'm not sure about other districts, we've asked, how does the school district do it?
We did it annually, annually, in January.
Yeah. And certainly the board of supervisors do it annually in January. As I said, you know, we've historically done it two, you know, more or less two years, and I think going to one year is fine.
I agree, and we can reelect people if that's appropriate, so that's all I have.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of making our committees all standing. One question I have, though, is, in doing so, does this mean we need to have Mr. Savage at each of those meetings? I'm thinking of cost.
It certainly would be recommended. You're going to need administrative support because you're going to need meds prepared.
Okay.
So, you'll need to notice it, so you need agendas to go on time, and agendas need to follow the same conditions of the Brown Act. It's everything that you would normally do for a regular meeting on the administrative side, but now it's for each of the committees that you designate as standing or that be Brown Act bodies.
So, I think it might be helpful, at least from a budgetary standpoint, if we make these committees standing, what are we looking at roughly, I mean, proposal and at least budgeting for that additional cost for your time?
If you're asking me how much time, actually, time it takes, you know, it's not a lot, quite honestly, to counsel your point, yeah.
I'm just, I'm asking that we make sure we at least are budgeting for that. If we make this change, we need to make sure we're budgeting for that additional cost.
I have been attending, so the additional time is only about a half hour to, what's that?
You've been there any.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there is the additional, you say you have to do the minutes, you have to notice, I mean, there's more administrative work.
For a short time, a half hour, so.
Okay, it's all we're making sure is we're budgeting for it. So, I'm definitely in favor of moving our ad hoc committees to standing and noticing. I also do like the idea of the elections in January. And as far as the bylaws versus the rules, I do remember this conversation way back when we first started. And I do remember also that we did initially, you and I, we put a calendar together, a template, you know, a basic calendar for, you know, how we operate throughout the year, somewhat similar to what we do on the school board. So, I, you know, I feel like in general, we've been moving and we've been adhering to and being compliant, but if there is, as to Lisa's point, if there's anything else that we need to do to really tighten it up, this would be, let's do that. I'm not an expert, I don't know.
Okay, I just mentioned that there are nine significant policies, that is, the district is forming, learning its duties, those are adopted, six are posted on the website, I just was checking, there's three that are, that the resolutions may be posted, but the policies themselves may not be, but compiled, they would make a policy manual, which would be a set of rules. And then that'd be the starting point to see what's lacking and what could be added.
So, I remember as we were forming these meetings, that the finance committee was a standing meeting, because it does meet every month to address the invoices that we have and review that. The other committees were, did not meet regularly and didn't need to meet regularly. And so, while I think that's probably still the case, it sounds like the board wants them to be standing meetings, it probably will just be canceling a lot of them. I'm trying to think, the technical committee prior to January, I don't know how many times it even met, based on what was going on. So, I mean, that's fine, we could do it that way. It sounds like the board wants to, we'll have some additional costs, but it sounds like the board's in favor of that, but I just wanted to point out that it was, there wasn't regular work products like the finance committee had, and that's why they were ad hoc.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, what is the role of the public if they choose to attend a committee meeting?
It's the same as they do attending a regular committee, a public comment period, or any actions that are being taken, public gets an opportunity to comment, but I comment on that. Since the committees are advisory, there are fewer types of decisions, but, you know, the thing to remember is, I've said throughout my time in this seat, is the Brown Act and state law provides a floor, a middle, what you need to do. And in some cases, it's not very clear what that is, so we do our best to interpret that. You can always provide one. So, going into the meeting, you start with a general public comment period, and there are items that the committee is going to discuss, and the committee is going to receive input as part of its decision-making process, you should have a public comment here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Correct. Does someone want to make an attempt at a motion?
Why don't we make two motions?
Yeah, so I'll make an attempt at the first one, which is, which is a resolution for annual elections of officers to be held in January.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second. So, now, just for clarification, that resolution would come back to us in July, I presume, and the resolution would say we would do this every January, so it would be starting January.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that was the intent of the motion.
Yes.
So, did the motion cover the committee?
No, we had the Senate.
It's going to be separate.
Well, it's going to be separate.
Otherwise, the motion's going to get a little, it's going to get confusing, and you start getting into multiple subparts, somebody could say, oh, I don't want to agree to that. Let's separate the issues out, and we'll go with two, if we need to, and then the three.
Okay.
If I may, so, I completely concur with the January concept, but I do want to remind the board that there are times, depending on how close an election is, let's say, last November's election, that'd be even closer, your board may not actually seat the seated members in January, it might be February, just because of the delay of things. So, while the intent I've reported means that the intent is January, it's really the first meeting when a newly elected board is seated, which might be in February, to allow those people to participate, so.
So, next year, that won't be an issue?
Correct.
But now, you know, in terms of we say that, will the resolution then account for that?
Sure, the resolution can be revised to appoint officers in January, starting in twenty twenty-four, every day or year after, or sooner after, as any newly elected directors are seated.
Okay.
Because the elections code says the first Friday in December is when the new office begins, but it also says, or until they're qualified. And that usually is interpreted to mean when the county certifies the results. That almost never happens in this county, by the first Friday in December. It usually ends up somewhere in the middle of the month. So, usually you're going to have everybody who's newly elected seated appropriately by the time January comes around, but as Mr. Savage says, in those, in that occasion, if it occurs and they're not seated, then we can have it in as soon thereafter as they are, any newly elected directors are seated.
I think that captures the intent.
Can I request it? Your motion maker, Andrew Second, agree with that, please?
Yes, he agrees, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we have a roll call then.
Director Kennedy.
Aye.
Director Palmer.
Aye.
Director Parks.
Aye.
Vice President Ross.
Aye.
President Fayram.
Aye.
Okay, now for the committees.
Okay, I'll take a stab, I'll be stepping up here, I'll take a stab. Okay, I move to reconstitute our ad hoc committees into standing committees.
Maybe I can make a suggestion.
Thank you.
I think the first thing to do is, given the input you've had and the way that the board seems to be going, I think the first thing you probably should do is just wipe the slate clean. Everybody seems to agree there's one standing committee, the finance committee, okay? So, you can make a motion to direct us to rescind eighteen oh four and to create a new proposed policy that makes all committees, standing committees, subject to the Brown Act. When you have that resolution, before you even get it adopted, then you can go about the process of appointing who those people are going to be on the committees, when they're going to meet, and what their subject matter jurisdiction is going to be. Because if you try and do all of that now, it's probably going to get pretty confusing. I'm not saying you can't, but that might be one way to try to eat the whole problem, instead of eating the whole problem.
Yeah, okay, I'll take another stab at it. I'll move that we rescind eighteen oh four.
Direct staff to prepare a resolution to rescind eighteen oh four.
And direct staff, direct staff to rescind eighteen oh four and prepare a new resolution to include all committees.
All committees as Brown Act bodies?
As a Brown Act bodies, thank you.
All committees that we have now.
All committees.
But in the future, we may have ad hoc committees.
And if you create new ad hoc committees in the future, then they'll be Brown Act bodies, at least as far as I'm understanding the direction from the board today.
So, maybe we should specify then for the current committees. Okay, finance committee.
Finance committee, again, that's, that one is, that one's easy.
Technical committee, project management committee, and grants committee.
Okay.
Is this all, any made for you?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
Second by Director Parks. So, Savage, roll call.
Director Kennedy.
Aye.
Director Parks.
Aye.
Vice President Ross.
Aye.
President Fayram.
Aye.
Director Palmer.
Aye.
Someone's going to meet in your house, guy?
Okay, so then we will go back then to item seven. Okay, so then we will, uh, go back then to item seven, item seven. If you can see that up the screen.
Would, would you ever, did we cover the appointments to the committee?
No.
Are we gonna do that? Are we gonna do that?
Would, would the, the resolution, the, the, will, will, will agendaize to reappoint?
I know. Don't we want a policy that says every January, we're gonna consider it, the needs, and make adjustments made? Are we gonna do that?
So what we talked about, I've looked at, yeah, we were gonna make the committee six months. Did we, did we read on that?
I did not hear that.
You did not hear that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that.
Okay.
Okay, six months.
You don't have to do that.
So, okay. Yeah, okay, yeah, right, based on the way the board.
The direction that I heard, that where I heard the vote bylaw was to rescind eighteen oh four and with all existing committees standing committees, and have the resolution say that.
Okay.
Well, the specific committees, when we mentioned.
Yes, those, which are all of them, current.
And then we would reappoint all of those in January?
Well, not that, not that we're necessarily going to make changes, but we're going to review every January if we need to make changes.
Well, they'll be.
Or you'll be reappointed, but we're making it harder than it needs to be.
Motion number three, direct staff to prepare a, a draft policy for committee appointments, uh, to take place for review every January.
Okay, I'll move that we direct staff to create a policy that will ensure that we review the appointments to committees every January.
I'll second.
Motion in the second. Roll call, Mr. Savage.
I'll second.
Vice President Ross.
Aye.
Director Kennedy.
Aye.
Director Parks.
Aye.
President Fayroum.
Aye.
Director Palmer.
Aye.
All right. When you're ready to go back for number seven, Mr. Savage.
Yeah, um, President Fayroum, given the, given the direction that the board has taken in receiving public comment, uh, and the reformulation of, of committees is directed, uh, my recommendation would be that you pull item seven. And once the committee situation is clarified and set down, and then reconsider it, uh, at that point at a notice meeting, um, pursuant to all of the new policies and resolutions.
Uh, yeah, um, I appreciate that, Mr. Trinble. I think that's probably the best way to go.
Well, I, I, I don't.
I, I would just say that, well, I wanna, I wanna say that we know, at the last two meetings, we have been prodded to get this concept here, and we, we did that. Fair enough, but that's, we can, we can, uh, re, uh, do, do our, um, resolution, and we'll reconvene the technical committee, and then we'll come back as appropriate. That's, I think that's where we're at.
Well, my take on it is, we met as a committee not to make any decision at all, but to come up with a starting point for how might we make this thing work.
Correct.
And that's what we're bringing to this meeting. It's a starting point. There's no decisions made. We welcome input on our starting point. So I don't see any issue with it. And we're wasting time.
I, I agree with you, but I'm prepared to pull item seven. If there's a motion for that. Now, that's our recommendation from council.
I reckon, go on, but why? Why do we need to pull?
In the public needs of, in the public comment at this point?
Mr. Trinble, based on what we're gonna do, whether we pull it, is there still public comment on item seven?
I, you haven't had public comment on item seven, have you?
Yes.
We've only had public comment on.
Right, we're, we're contemplating what to do with item seven, whether to move forward or not. If we pull it, is there public comment?
Well, there, there's no, there hasn't been any recommended action from the board. You haven't had a motion. We have a motion, then you can go public comment at that point, sure.
Okay. Okay.
So at this point, there's, there's some more discussion on what motion to make. Uh, and if, uh, Director Ross is, is asking me, uh, why the recommendation to publicly do it, why we received a lot of public, uh, comment, that there was people who wanted to participate, who were not able to do so for various reasons, uh, and there is at least a perception that there were decisions made. There is a perception that there was some type of contract that was made, and I don't, I haven't seen any, any information on that. But, uh, the consensus of the board, it just made three motions, to basically take actions to clarify all of the steps, to raise and to dispel the cloud that seems to be settled on everything. So, uh, and there has been one request to make a cure, uh, under the Brown Act. And I, I'm not gonna go into the full analysis on that, but the, I think the recommended action would be to take in all of the public comment consistent with what the board has done, and to, uh, to continue the item, to pull it off this agenda, and after the resolutions and the policy are in place, go back and have that full discussion.
Well, what we wanna do is present this thing tonight and get public input, so I don't know why we need to delay everything for that. We need to get movement. We've been criticized for not getting things done before now. And now we're giving all of these things that are gonna slow us down. I don't get it. This is ready for input. It's flexible. There's nothing decided. We may totally throw the whole thing out, but it's a starting point, something to think about.
I, I would just comment on that, Director Ross, is that this has been published, so it's out there now, and, and, and people can see that. And then when we come back and, and, and bring it back, there'll, there'll be more opportunity for review and comment. I, I understand your timeline. Sometimes, sometimes we, we trip up by, by trying to go too fast.
Okay, I'll take a step up here. Let me make a motion to remove item seven from the agenda and bring it back on a future agenda.
I would say refer it back to the ad hoc committee?
Refer it back to the ad hoc committee.
After the board has taken action on the prior, uh, resolutions.
After the board has taken action on the prior resolutions.
I'll second.
Okay, um, take, take public comment now, Mr. Trinble?
Yes.
So, um, I have Paul Rohr.
Thank you. Um, rather than sandbagging folks, I want to agree with your counsel. If the right thing to do is to take this off, because you're opening yourself up to a writ of action, as Ms. Scott pointed out. One, because we don't think it's an ad hoc. Two, even if it were, by your own policies, uh, it, it yielded to a, uh, disgust. None of that happened. Uh, next, there was a contract that, according at least to, to, um, Monsieur Savage's email, there was a contract made, uh, to do some studying. It appears that it was done, some work was done by Engineer Pike and his firm. Uh, and that would not have been legal to have been done at, uh, without the board authorities. That was a mistake when that happened. And the context of the study went beyond any authority we could have assumed that committee had, because it also talks about changing the boundaries of the district. So as a result, it's just all about, right? So the right thing is pull it off, start again, do it the right way. Maybe there's a delay, but it's a much shorter delay than fiddling around with a bunch of lawyers hustling. Um, so that would be my advice, and is to agree with your counsel on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other?
Yes, come in.
Oh, oh, Catherine, yeah, thank you.
Uh, Catherine Rohr, I just wanted to say quickly, I appreciate your frustration, but understand that the public also has considerable frustration. It might have been before your time on the board, Director Ross, but, um, if you look back through the old minutes and agendas, um, the public was advised of when the technical committee was going to be meeting previously, and that practice sort of fell by the wayside. So I just want to reiterate, it's why it's important to have bylaws which are written, or rules which are written. So a pattern of sort of sporadic practices is how we got here. Um, and so I, I am with you on the need to make haste, not waste. But, um, it was not a properly noticed meeting. It wasn't a lawfully held meeting, and it needs to be noticed and, and held properly. And so I think the board is, is very much doing the right thing, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rohr. Mr. Savage, are there any comments on that?
Emre Gav.
Ms. Scott.
Board members, I'd just like to echo what, um, Mr. Rohr and Ms. Rohr have stated, um, which is basically that, you know, they agreed with the action that you are now going to be taking, and that there were problems in the past, and they really need to be rectified for the future. I'd also recommend that, uh, by the next meeting, that all, all of the committees actually, um, decide upon set dates moving forward, so that the public has a calendar of when all of these meetings are tentatively supposed to be, uh, taking place. Uh, finally, I would just like to say that, you know, just in reviewing the maps that are proposed, I'm really disheartened by what the technical committee actually, um, proposed, uh, you know, as agenda item, uh, number seven.
Wait, hold on, um, Ms. Scott, um, Mr. Trinble, we're, the item has the motion to continue, not the content of the item.
Correct.
So your, your comments can be at the next meeting, Ms. Scott, on the content of the, uh, of the item. Thank you.
Then, I'll just end there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Okay, we have a, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Savage, any others?
No.
So we have a motion and a second, so we need a roll call.
Yeah, I wanted to declare, um, Director Kennedy's, um, motion, and Director Parks' second, I think.
Yeah.
Just wanted to return the numbers correct. Okay, um, Director Kennedy.
Aye.
Director Parks.
Aye.
Vice President Ross.
No.
President Fayroum.
Aye.
Director Palmer.
Aye.
Carries four one. And then that will bring us to item eight.
All right. So, um, as was briefly introduced, uh, as part of public comment, but let me bring up the, the actual. Hold on, sorry. Um, so the, the district had received a, a letter from the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. I'm finding right now.
Page ninety.
I know. Um, oh, sorry. I'm just trying to bring up the, the original copy, because it's a little clear, but, oh, here it is. Got it. Okay. So we actually received the, the requirement letter, um, which is in the package on page ninety, apparently, and, uh, also an informal suggestion related to groundwater monitoring options. So the letter, as, uh, was previously noted, um, is, is consistent with discussions that we've been having in an ongoing fashion with the, with our partners at the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. Um, and it basically says, look, you need to, um, install three more wells. Um, I'll note that, um, you know, it has been part of the conversation.
I'm trying to figure out where it says that. It says we have to give them a map and tell them about stuff. Where to say we have to actually do the work? Maybe I missed it.
Um, I, I, I believe Vice President Ross wanted, says, give us a schedule for the implementation.
We can, we can give them the schedule if we have to do it. I don't think they're telling us to have to do it, except to tell them how to do it.
So I, I understood, um, so, uh, let me continue on, we'll come back to that, uh, if that's okay. So, um, as part of those conversations, and, and the way I wrote, uh, our letter, uh, in response to, I, I do want to be really clear with the board and the public that, um, a combination of Central Coast Water Board staff, as well as county EHS staff, has led us to believe that there may be county funding to be able to do this. We just have not applied for such a grant, nor has it been granted in any way, shape, or form, right? So, um, as we've said, we don't have the funds to do this, right? If, if, if my estimates are, are accurate, um, which are included in my response letter. Um, but if we were to go down this path, you can see the, the kind of costs that we're talking about. So, oh, man, sorry, I meant to share my screen. Let me do that for the, for the public and those in the room. Um, so now up on the screen, shortly up on the screen here, this is the letter that I'm referring to, um, from May thirty-first, uh, from the water board, sent to me, um, requiring us essentially to install a sample of groundwater monitoring wells. So, um, I think one of the, the first questions that someone might ask is, uh, does the water board have the authority to require us to do this? The answer is yes. Um, now, would they come down with a hammer and say, you must do this before anything else? No, that, I, I personally, and this is just my opinion, not council's opinion, your board is free to make its own opinion. I don't think they would do that, because they're too good of a partner, and they understand the kind of situation we're in, right? Uh, they do want to see these groundwater monitoring wells installed, um, and so I think they're willing to work with us to, to figure out ways to make that happen. Um, and so that's part of what's, uh, underlying the letter, basically, if, that I, that I drafted for President Fayroum to use, or a modified version thereof, to basically say, look, we understand, here's where we would put them, and as soon as we've got the right funding to be able to do it, that doesn't interfere with us trying to get an actual system installed, um, we'll work on the wells. And, uh, so that's kind of the, the gist of it. Um, I can certainly, um, let me, in fact, let me bring up my response letter, um, so you can see that as well. See if that was just over. It did. Okay. So, um, Mr. Matt Keeling is, is the executive officer at the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. And basically in the letter, and it's again part of the agenda, um, I'm suggesting that, you know, as, in, consistent with what your board has said in the past, that, um, certainly we don't have the funds to do this, right? Um, we know that. We just are going to talk about a proposed budget here next month. Um, my estimate to be able to do the installation of three new wells, plus biannual testing, which is what the requirement is, for five years, is somewhere in the two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollar range. If you look at our budget, you said, well, if our two hundred thousand dollars a year, roughly half of that can be spent on this sort of thing, it would take us three years of savings to be able to do this work, right?
And do nothing else.
And do, doing nothing else, exactly. Um, so, um, you, you can see where that all comes. And then I, I attempted to put into perspective here, in this paragraph, where we're at, right? We have some, some eight hundred thousand dollars of activities we need to do outside of the wells, uh, just to get to a, to a, to a team, uh, election. So combined, you're talking in excess of a million, of a million dollars to do both the wells and all of the other work, as we estimated today. So there's that. Um, certainly willing to, to take whatever input you have on that. And then last, but certainly one last, this may be of interest to, um, the public in particular. Um, first, I'll show this map. Um, in our discussions with, uh, water board staff, you can see, you know, here's monitoring well one up here in the upper left, here's monitoring well two in the upper right. Um, you know, it, it's often thought, well, maybe there's things coming down from the, from the, um, from the old dump. Um, there is so much testing that's done near the dump, and this monitor, this well here didn't show anything that suggests that we're getting huge concentrations from the dump. In fact, there's a creek, for those who know, that squiggles down this way. And we wouldn't see it if there were significant things coming from the dump in the shallow groundwater, uh, wells. Uh, here's number two, as I mentioned. Um, originally, I had proposed to them that we do three kind of down here, and four down here. And the reason for that, if you look at, um, parcel sizes around the district, you can kind of see it a little bit in the background here, right? You can see these lots of little lines right above my cursor here. Um, those are what we often refer to as the bottom of the small lot. So the thinking was, um, put it at the bottom of the small lot, so we could understand what's, you know, happening between well number two and well number four, and what concentrations, uh, might be coming from the southern part, I'll call it, of, uh, the commercial district and the small lots. Um, for those who aren't familiar with this, of course, when, when you think about septic tanks and how things seep, right? It doesn't just, you put it in the ground here, it doesn't go straight down, right? It spreads out and goes down. Um, so, um, that's why, you know, even if you put a well here, it's gonna pick up things in a bigger circle, right? Uh, not just the, the things right there. Um, we, in the discussions, we're talking about monitoring well five being right down here at the foot of the, of the district. As a reminder again, for those who aren't familiar with it. As a reminder again for those who aren't familiar with it, water flows go north to south, so this would capture, we'd have two wells at the top saying, "Here's what's basically coming into the district and the issues being caused by those facilities right around those wells, and here's what's going out of the district." Water Board staff looked at these and said, "No, they'd actually like to see them closer to the downtown core." So, I revised that to make recommended three and four, these little yellow sort of bars here. Along Olivet Street is the horizontal here, for those who are familiar with our community. I suppose I could probably try and zoom in just a little bit so you might be able to see it a little bit better. Zoom in there, make it a little easier to see. So this is Olivet, that essentially goes across this way, Santa Barbara Avenue, somewhere along here. This moves both of them, so, you know, 400 feet closer, 600 feet closer to the downtown core, and puts us in right of ways that I believe will be acceptable to the county. Of course, anytime you want to sink a well along the road, right of ways, you do have to work with the county to be able to say, "Can we put it there?", and they say yes or no, and then you put it in the well. Recommendation is on the west side of Santa Barbara Avenue. For those who are familiar with Santa Barbara Avenue, we've got electrical poles, water, and I believe fiber optics that run down the west side, so keep, or on the east side, rather, so keep it on the west side, just stay away from that stuff. And then, again, for those who are familiar with our community enough, this is that stretch of San Marcos Road that is currently dirt, right? You kind of, if you turn right off of Olivet, you'd be on the dirt, and you'd go for a block, right? And then there's those little poles that keep people from turning left. You come up the other way. So, that's essentially where I'm posing based on comments from them. I would add that if you look for a minute, let me just see if I can bring this one up here. We do have, and it's been posted for quite some time, on our district webpage, where it is? I had it open. We do have...let me get to it this way, yeah, here we go. Let me share this real quick. We do have a groundwater monitoring plan that was put together based on the special problems area as much as it was on the district. So, this red dash line is the special problems area, it's not the district boundary, let's be clear, right? That's the special problems area boundary. Instead, the district is a little bit smaller than that, and as you can imagine, and you can kind of see over here on the right, phase one is what's proposed, meaning all the first round of wells that should be done are the green circles, right? So we've kind of done this circle here and this circle here, and here's where we're proposing number five would be, somewhere down at the foot. This discussion about things in the middle that have come up more recently kind of addressed this green circle here, but you'll notice that where we're really talking is about the S here in Los Olivos, right? So, we're going a little bit outside, but I think from a Water Board perspective, if I can speak for them based on conversations I've had with them, it makes sense to put one on either side of the main creek, right? Here's the main creek that comes down, Alamo Patato Creek. So to put one on this side of the creek and one on this side of the creek, particularly when you look at housing densities, it does make sense to go ahead and put a couple in there from their perspective. And I think the GSI folks who, of course, put together this groundwater monitoring plan, I've spoken to them briefly, and they totally confirmed that, given the size of the district and the way the district boundaries have been redrawn differently from the special problems area, that these locations do make sense. So, with that, I'm happy to try and answer any questions from your board. Again, what I proposed is, we send them back the maps that I showed you a minute ago, saying, "Well, here's where we would recommend we put them." Along with that, we would say, "Look, we don't have the funding today, but if we can find grant funding to do it, happy to comply and make it all the way." With that, back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to note a couple of things, too. The two wells that we have in place now, they weren't ordered to do that, right? We did that. And granted, we got funding from EHS to do that, so all good. I just can't be understated, the cost of this, to fall on a community of our size, just won't work. And so, I also suggested that the regional board and EHS start attending our meetings remotely so that they can hear what we're talking about on some of these struggles. I don't know if any of them joined us tonight.
Would you have Water Board staff?
We have Water Board, well, that's great. And so, I appreciate you joining, and you can hear, you know, where we're at, the three years of our funding doing nothing else, and in three years, we'll be able to put that in and then do nothing else in between, and that's just not going to work. So, you know, I think what Mr. Savage says, I think that this is a cooperative relationship, and I think they do understand our issues and they are trying to help. So I think the letter, while it says order, I think they understand the predicament we're in, because we talked about that when we were on the phone. So, would have been better to be worded a little differently, but, you know, at least I'm clear on where we're trying to get with that, and we want to work closely with that. The last thing I wanted to mention, too, Mr. Savage, we've worked, or you've worked, to try to get testing done through the county's testing program, and we've been yet unsuccessful on that. Is that still the case?
They're willing to test and have tested, as I reported last meeting, on depths, but not constituents in the water.
Yeah, the depth doesn't...
Yeah.
About any of us could do that almost, but the constituents is the issue. So, we're still in that information vacuum with the two wells we have. So, let's see, comments from board, should we go to...we have at least one public speaker for this. Board want to wait for a public comment or anything to go first? Go to Mr. Roar.
So, I just want to go back to what Mr. Savage said, because I think it's all very helpful. So first off, Mr. Savage established that you must do what this board tells you to do. Consequently, to elect not to do that, right, that's not rational. It would be an arbitrary and capricious action by you, because you can't say, "Ooh, I'm going to consciously disregard the demands of a regulatory body." Next, Mr. Savage mentioned, he said, "Well, we don't have the money." But then he sort of went on to say, "Well, we do have the money, but we want to spend it on our, getting to our proposition to 18, though." In fact, I think the quote, and I could have gotten this wrong, but it said, "As long as it doesn't interfere with us getting the system installed." In other words, like, "Don't bother us with the facts of what you might find in a well, let us just install our system, and maybe we'll do some wells to go along with it." And I think that's been part of the problem. I mean, the problem we've had for years on this is, one, not consistently obeying the law or any rules, and, two, the idea that you would just rush into a system without really thinking through what's needed. I think maybe folks in South County may have told us what they think is needed, but we've never really sat down and thought about it, right? We've never done the testing that would tell us what we would need to know. So you wonder, like, "Why would the Water Board say that we need to prioritize these wells?" Well, maybe they're letting you know that you need to prioritize the wells so that you know what it is that you're curing. I mean, eventually, you're going to have to make findings, you're going to have to make determinations, you're going to have to get through CECL. And in order to do all of those things, you're going to have to have a basis for doing it. You're going to want these wells. If you don't have them, right, what's going to happen is, two, three years, whatever it is that you get there, you're going to have some smart golic in a courtroom telling you all the things you did wrong, and then you're going to have to go back and start again. So now is the time to do it correctly. Just reassess your priorities, put the wells up at the top like the Water Board is telling you to do, and work away at it. I have no objection to what you guys have worked out or where you're putting it. The Water Board thinks that's the right place, I'm sure it is, on my complete confidence. But go ahead and put those wells higher up on your agenda. You have the money, you just don't want to spend the money on that, because if you spend it on this, you can't spend it on something else, right? It's like my daughter wants to send her allowance on candy. That doesn't mean it's always a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Are there any other public comments? Oh, please.
I appreciate the public comments so far. I've been attending these meetings. The bottom line that I can see is that we don't have the money to devote to these monitoring wells. If we do that and we make that a our only objective, we will be sitting here in 2026 with nothing else achieved, zero. So, we all have to get real here. You have a total budget committed, known funds, of $287,000?
Seventy-seven, $277, yeah.
Let's think about what we can do with that to move forward, rather than getting stuck in the minutia of procedural issues and back, 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 then being open to criticism that we have done nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Well, and I would add that that's exactly what the criticism that we have been starting to get from left go and whatnot, and we go back for extensions, so. Would you, I'll get to you. State your name, please.
Lynn Golden. Just a quick question. Mr. Savage mentioned that the water well number one, water came back with no noted issues, but what about well number two?
Perhaps take it if you want.
You can answer that.
So, we measure for constituents particularly on what's known as MCL, so it's basically concentrations. The allowable limit is a 10, okay? Anything above that is considered too much. Well number one came in at a 3, well number two came in at 10 when we monitored, last number.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alum.
Yeah, I just had a real quick question. This board was formed in 2018, is that correct? This problem happened a long time before this board was formed. Doesn't Santa Barbara County have some culpability in this? Shouldn't they be doing this water testing?
That completes your question. I think, I was going to speak to that, so maybe I was, and they have been helpful, EHS. On the one hand, I'm sitting here making, you know, thoughts that, I don't know that it's this community's problem itself to do that. Monitoring wells in a regional, I mean, we have a, you know, a groundwater basin plan that we're doing, there's all sorts of things going on, and just the numbers don't, it doesn't work. I mean, options disband the districts, right? I mean, if that's what we're going to do, then what are we doing? And so, I don't think the regional board is taking that posture to do this or else, because the or else's, I think we all go home. And, but that said, we have been working on a cooperative front with EHS and the regional board, and trying to get the county, maybe there's still opportunities for the county to do the constituency testing, or maybe EHS gives us the money then to do it, and so then we... You were very short on your time, but this isn't a back and forth, but you took 10 seconds, so I'm going to allow you one last comment.
Tom, my only question is, you know, Santa Barbara County's culpable in this. I mean, they're violating their own policies that they established in 20, or 1989 when they did this moratorium. They've allowed density increases, they've allowed changes of use within that moratorium, they've done all kinds of stuff, and they're not being held responsible, and they need to be held responsible, and they need to come up with some money to do this testing.
Yeah, and we're working on that front, so thank you, Ms. Alum. Were there any others? Okay, so bring that back to the board then?
Yep.
Comments? And I won't forget, Ms. Palmer. We'll start down with Director Parks.
You know, again, I just wanted to address Paul, because, you know, I think that the whole thing, I mean, they're saying that we need to do these, but I think, I think they're going to help us, because we can't spend all of our money just not, just drilling wells, like Tom said, and then what are we doing? We're basically a Water Board that's not doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Mr. Ross.
There is a reason why we take the drilling of wells and monitoring of wells a very low priority, and that is based on the study done in 2010, where they explained the basis for the special problems area designation. So what is it based on? There are eight different factors. One of the eight is evidence of water quality impact, and the others are other things that we cannot change. And so my question would be, regardless of what the results are of the water quality monitoring, would it make any difference? Would we cease to become, or cease to be a special problems area if our numbers came back nice and low? And I believe the answer is, it doesn't make a bit of difference, because you still have too many septic tanks and all these other seven considerations are still there. And so I think that we need to get an understanding from the Water Board as to what the potential effect of any of this would be. I don't think there's any. And as far as, I think we're going to vote on whether to send the letter, is that right? So my concern about the letter, I like the maps, but they asked us for a schedule, a schedule to install wells and a schedule to sample them. I think we can do that, and I think we should respond to their letter so they don't have any excuses to complain about it. That's my...
Director Kenny.
I, this is just a general question, as I read through this, are there similar CSDs? They have to monitor wells as well, but this is...
Bet your mind.
Okay. And then the other question I had, as I read through the letter, wasn't terribly clear. You know, they list these options, does that mean we get to choose which of these options for monitoring the... Like I said, it was a little bit unclear, I mean, through some of the jargon, but, yeah, I also have to echo that, I mean, while it would be great to have wells, we just have an extraordinarily limited amount of funds to work with, and priorities are really critical. Yeah, this is, I guess it's a hard one to put up at the top.
But could, well, I don't know if, I know Mr. Ricardi and Mr. Garcia's here. Do you know what was sent in, that CSD? Do they have wells that they monitor? Their sewer system, but part of their district does have septic tanks, but do either, do you know, do they have monitoring required? They're also much larger.
Yeah, Mr. Farron, I don't have any idea, actually. Sorry.
The peril of showing up at a meeting and asking a question.
Probably worth contacting.
Yeah. So, you know, I think that the other thing that maybe Director Parks had mentioned earlier as well is, you know, we've been more or less told by the regional board, told again, that they expect a community solution. And so, you know, so that's why we're here, we're trying to get to that, but they expect that as well, so. So I think I'm hearing the sentiment of the board is that, yeah, we get the money, that we can do this, and I think that's basically what the letter says. And I want to echo again, I think the regional board and EHS has been willing to work with us on that. They're not saying, "Pay for it, do it yourself," and that's just the way it is. I have not heard that from them. I don't know if you agree with that, Mr. Savage, or not.
I, yeah, I...
Yeah, you agree. Okay, well, I'm comfortable with the letter. I think it, I think it says what we, the spirit of what we've been talking about here, so. Wait, I'm sorry, I have not gone to Director Palmer. Sorry, Director Palmer.
All right, I would have spoken, I think everyone's covered my comments. I mean, I appreciate board's partnership. I understand the requirement. Again, as you said, Tom, they're requiring us to come up with a community solution as well. We've done some monitoring, we did monitoring last year, that's the first monitoring data we've had in decades, so I know we want more, but we just, I think the letter is an appropriate response, it keeps the door open and lets, you know, lets work with the county and the Water Board to find money to do the monitoring. I mean, it's a regional, as you, who, I don't know which board member pointed out, I mean, this is a regional... this is a regional issue, not only a list leave us issue, so we need partners who have been to help us with the funding part of it, not just the identification, so, thank you.
Look to Director Kennedy for a motion, maybe.
All right, let's see, I'm gonna say, I'm terrible at this, all right, I mean, I mean, I'll move to have, the gentleman Savage send the letter as drafted.
From me or from?
From Tom.
Okay.
Sorry, the letter from Tom, send it as drafted, from, yes, that's it, that's it.
We have a motion?
I'll say.
Second by Director Parks. Roll call.
Can I re-?
Oh, I'm sorry, please.
I, I really think we should be responsive to their requirement to provide maps and a schedule, and we don't have a schedule, I wonder. So, I just think we need to do it the way they're asking.
I don't have any right of schedule, we don't have the money, that's, I don't, it would be a false, it would be a false schedule, because we have no idea where the money would come from.
Well, it's kind of like the schedule that was put on the, on the lap or the lap door, certain things to be done in two years, there's no money for that. As of right now, there's not, so. I, I, I hear your frustration, I, I think, and regional board staff has listened to this right now, and so I, I hope they appreciate the dilemma that we're in, but.
Director, Vice President Ross, rather, you know, one to, to meet your, your comment. I did consider kind of a, okay, once we get funding, this is how long it will take, sort of the schedule, I could put that together and include it, it's about four months to five months scheduled to take upon scheduling of drillers. So, just to put that into concrete terms, you know, let's say we got a grant January 1, right, you could have them installed by May of that same year, right? So, we could provide that sort of a calendar, but it won't be, it won't end by this day.
They want a schedule for install and for sample, and they talked about semi-annual, so it's pretty near, and I just think it's simple and it's responsive, that's the way I'd like us to be positioned.
We have a motion, second. Unless the.
Well, I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay, okay, I'll, it's only an amendment to the motion to include, to amend the letter to include a, a schedule based on.
Installation and testing.
Thing, installation and, and, and monitoring.
Is that fine with you, Director Parks? I'll say.
Okay.
Make that a second.
Roll call.
Director Kennedy. Director Parks.
Aye.
Vice President Ross.
Aye.
President Fairham.
Aye.
Director Palmer.
Aye.
Okay, now, we will come to item 10, informational, well, informational items now is the balance of the agenda, these items are informational only, no action and no public comment received. Item 10A is subcommittee reports. You wanna call it off? Why don't we start with grants?
Well, do we, okay, so a question.
Or do we wanna, do we wanna report out until?
They're all illegal. I, I think the, the grants committee is very clearly an ad hoc committee, I think if you wanna report on that, you can, but my recommendation would be, start over, start over, scratch that, everything.
Sorry, I've got a ton of work on this, but.
That's a, that's, that's, well, we'll do that, then we'll, then we will move on to 10B, which is the general manager, district engineer, accounts.
Right, so, the, my reports are gonna be a bit short of this month, so, let's start with.
What page are we on?
I'm gonna show it for everybody, I don't know the pages, this is the, I'm gonna start with, with the roadmap and a couple of different views of the roadmap as we've been describing it, you can see it here on the board in front of us and on the screen for those watching via Zoom. Again, this red box indicates the fiscal year we're about to head into, 2324, and what's been added, based on some comments I've heard, you know, this is basically the same list of things down the left that we've been talking about for, for a couple of months at least. What's been added over here on the right was, when this was put together, my perception of who the lead on any given activity would be, so you can see, you know, who, who should be working on that if, if these committees are reconstituted as is being proposed, this is, I guess, then a proposal as to who might be responsible for them. Here again, you see the cost that would hit in the 2324 budget year, assuming this is what happens, and down here is the total cost for the various activities going across. So, I'm not gonna go into all the details of this side of it, and then down here at the bottom is the $300,000 of the, would be wells. What I did add, and I think is helpful in many ways for people to understand, is, well, what work can be completed before a new project description is adopted by your board? So, those are shown in green, work that could be, doesn't necessarily have to be, but could be completed prior to some sort of final project description. So, clearly, we can continue public workshops and outreach, we can do technical review, we can do additional study, we can work on the final project description itself. Some of the work around 60% design and assessment engineering, probably best done after you have a project description, you can also finalize some citing options, because that's gonna be needed for environmental study. However, environmental study itself should wait for your final project description, and as I was looking at this, my general thought was, you might wanna consider a new committee to deal specifically with environmental, as opposed to some of the other more technical stuff or project management stuff, however, you could certainly leverage what presumably will be a standing committee in the future. The MHI study, yups, I got that one backwards, sorry, the MHI study should have been green, you can do the MHI study prior to, to a final description, as you can do financing plans and seeking grants and that sort of thing. All the 218 stuff, of course, falls further out, really shouldn't, can't be completed realistically until you have a project description, all the monitoring well stuff could be. So, that's one sort of view of these things, another view is provided by those activities that I list as funded versus not funded, and this is where I messed up the MHI, I can see that now clearly. So, all of these things above up here are, are things that your board can continue to fund to a certain extent, right? You have to remain full of the fact, we had the whole conversation about matching funds for grants and being able to complete work that you're gonna get grants funds on, but technically, you could, for instance, go off and spend every penny you have on technical review, monitoring wells notwithstanding, technical review or additional tech, so you could do that, again, I wouldn't recommend as your general manager that you do that, but you could prior, because those are technically things you could fund, and then down below here, you know, we don't have the funds yet for additional watering wells, so these currently are unfunded because of the cost, you don't have the money to do that, you don't have the money to do these other things, so, but just a way to kind of slice the same information a couple of different ways so people can begin wrapping their brain around, well, what can we do, what can't we do, and, you know, just, again, try and provide your board a little more information from that perspective. So, that's one portion of my report, the other portion is, just a second here, I'll bring it up. My very brief project summary report in past months, and you know, it's been quite a bit longer, I'll make it a little bigger so you can more easily see it. So, in keeping with my authorizations from your board, I went ahead and authorized $2,780 in additional expenses to the original contracts with Martin's needing part-time to do our audits, I conferred with the finance committee, they agreed that, and that was a very good thing to do, what that allowed us to do is get caught up, all prior years of now, your board earlier received and filed all prior year audits, we're 100% caught up, as I think I mentioned earlier, all of the audit reports have been sent to the state comptroller's office, they've also, we also have some additional work that Mossley Hardtime provides for us related to letters we have to provide to our insurance carrier and other things, and all of those have also been sent in accordance with what's required. The other thing I would note is this other here, and we can, I'll leave it to your board, you don't have to make a decision tonight, but it's something, I'm looking, maybe you want me to agendize for a more official kind of conversation in July, and that is, as things sit right this minute, you will not have a forum for your August meeting, oops, I left out the word August, my apologies, I'm reading that again, you will not have a forum for your August meeting, you have two for sure, most likely three directors who will not be in town at that, at that meeting, so I would recommend you cancel it and reschedule the August meeting, but of course, that's up to your board how to handle it, and again, my decision you to make tonight, I'll agendize it for next month so that you can, you can talk through that more effectively. Now, you could cancel it without, you know, you can cancel it in other ways, I just think it, given all the discussion we've been having, you know, doing that in open forum.
So, I, yeah, I think you should just bring that as an agenda item for, for July, and then, a question, if we were to cancel it with the invoices, are we, are we in trouble for paying two month, if, if, for instance, if we were to not have a July or an August meeting and in September, pay the two, or is that, I, I'm not sure, is it 30 days net for MNS and, and Mr. Trindl's firm, or will we need a special meeting if nothing else, or how would that work?
Our contracts are in different ways, I, do you know what your firm requirement is, is it 30 days in case?
It's 30 days, but we don't bring any grass snuckles until after 90.
So, I think you'd be fine if you were to skip one month.
Yeah.
So, I would advocate, I, I'd advocate that they reschedule, I just think with everything that's going on, I don't wanna cancel August, I prefer rescheduling it.
Well, if we could find, if we could find a slot that works, there's.
Of course, with a forum, I think we can probably do that.
How about if I work, you know, make it part of next month's agenda, I'll work with your board to find a date that may be mutually acceptable to all of those involved. So, that's the end of my report.
Thank you.
I did give some general information, activity this past month, there's the, we had a, an engineer technician assist with exhibits, so it's kind of the beginning of GIS system to show options that could be useful later on and useful in your next agenda. Also submitted a, as you know, a draft report as a condition of the recycled water program funding that we got, just so everyone's clear on what that is, it's simply a summary of work done today, doesn't draw any conclusions or make any recommendations at this point, because it's, that's up for the board to do, and then it'll go into the final report. The only thing that is unique in there that was contributed, my, my knowledge and background is information concerning how we get to beneficial recycled reuse water, which is not drinking level water, but can be in purple pipe and potentially distributed, and that ultimately will be the owner of that and responsibility for the distribution, that would be anyone. But this grant is, after all, the recycled water funding grant for planning, and so what that would look like to get to tertiary treated water that could be distributed and used for irrigation at high school or parks or ag uses even, has to have distribution system, storage pumps, and that sort of thing, so we began the description of that, and not making any, any decisions, but that, that's the point, and it's good because they're focusing us on that, because that's the trend, that's the way of the future, that's where everybody has to do at some point in time, and new orders from the regional board typically encourage that, to not stop at secondary treatment, but to move to tertiary treatment, that it's a long-term solution for sustainability and water supplies. And that draft is required, we have the first half of our 50% grant, so it's $75,000, and worked with the grant staff folks to understand that, you know, they, they're looking for something between 70%, which is easily what was submitted, and it's considered kind of an internal draft for them to review for completeness, and we can, in the meantime, check it for accuracy, and then there'll be a file that'll be released and posted on the website, and there will be the public drafts that we decide to do at some point, but, which we probably will, it's a public outreach, but really, well, all it is a summary of the work we've done, and no, there's no new work other than I introduced the concepts and what's required, have that tertiary water and a purple pipe distribution system.
Mr. Savage, anything else? Comes to adjournment, could I have a motion for adjournment?
Did you want to do director comments, sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at, yeah, director comments. We'll start down with Director Parks.
I guess, main comment I wanna make is, I think that there's a guy who's been listening to the meeting, Lohelio Rodriguez with Water FX, and he's that part of the funding company that goes out and looks for grant money, funding for projects like this, and then they don't get paid unless we get funded, and then they take administrative costs and whatnot, so I just wanted to welcome him, and I think he's been part of the meeting and listening to us, I think he'll hopefully report back with some information on that.
Ross?
Just wanted to say a big thank you to Guy, he's done a lot of work lately, he invented a lot of stuff, and I'd like to thank everyone in the community that is part of our community services district for coming and listening, thank you.
Kennedy?
I had a whole bunch on the ground stuff, but I don't.
And I think most of my stuff was covered in earlier things, just wanna thank, before I go to Director Palmer, thank her for taking time out of her vacation to join our meeting. So, Director Palmer?
Thanks, Joe, well, we've got important discussions today, so I wanted to be here. Just very briefly, I had a conversation with Megan Deatonhofer from Supervisor Hartman's office last week, and county transportation and the supervisor are gonna be holding a community meeting at the end of July, date to be determined regarding parking in town, and just, A, wanted the board and the community to be aware that that's coming up, and B, she had suggested and encouraged board representation, or district, excuse me, district representation at that meeting, so when we have more on that, I'll make sure Guy knows about it, but I just, they, they, anyway, that's my report.
And, and maybe we'll know that date by our July meeting, if it's at the end of July.
Yeah, well, yeah.
On that question for council, if three of our board happen to go there, how's, how's that handled?
Is it an open and public meeting? Agendized and all that, that you can, you can attend, best practice, don't sit next to each other, obviously, don't talk about anything you might have heard either going into it or afterwards, but that's a general exception to the Brown Act, attendance at generally available public meetings, same thing attending supervisors for another public agency's meeting.
Wanted to make sure that, yeah, thank you for that.
But don't talk ahead of time, don't sit next to each other, and don't talk to each other else, after that, outside of a regular meeting.
Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, Director Kennedy, we're busy, gonna make a.
I'll do it, I'm the one here tonight, I make a motion to adjourn at 8:10.
And I think, we need a roll call for that? Okay, well, do that, Mr. Savage.
Director Kennedy.
Aye.
Director Parks.
Aye.
Vice President Ross.
Vice President Ross.
Aye.
President Fager.
Aye.
Director Palmer.
Aye.